Now you'll have to grab your nameplate when you move.
Right, oh, no, it's all right.
For the reorg.
Oh, you have to open a meeting?
Yeah.
Oh, that's right.
I get to bang that devil.
She's gonna make some changes while she's up there too.
She might not, she might just take over.
Madame Castro, Madame Krujcev, keep your shoes on. Krujcev, when he banged the shoe. Tell us, Krujcev, right?
Are we on? Great. That's fabulous.
Heel down, heel down.
We will bury you.
Yep, we will bury you.
Okay, you ready? Good evening. It's my pleasure to open this evening's meeting of the North Reading School Committee for May 6th, 2013. By policy, this is the annual reorganization that takes place the first Monday after the town election. And so the superintendent acts as the chairperson for this portion of the meeting. So at this particular time, I would like to entertain a motion for the chairperson of the North Reading School Committee.
Who's interested?
I would like to ask Cliff Bowers if he's interested in serving.
I will if chosen.
I would like to nominate Cliff for chair.
Anybody else that's interested? Mr. Webster?
I'd be interested, but if Mr. Bowers is deeply interested, I would defer it to Mr. Bowers.
Mr. Bowers, you interested in the vice chair as well?
I'd be happy with a vice chair. I'm willing to serve.
You know Lyndon Johnson, huh?
So I, I mean...
I'd be happy to nominate Mr. Webster.
Well, there's a motion on the table, I think.
I'll second the motion for discussion.
So we have a motion and a second for discussion?
I mean, I was thinking in terms of status quo, primarily because no one else has expressed an interest except for Cliff. And the only issue I see with Cliff is the potential conflicts that he may have because of his...
This is not a negotiation year, but there are issues with the new evaluation process.
Yeah, well, there's always issues. There's always issues that come up with it. But I'm just raising that as a...
The only thing I will say is that I, you know, Mr. Bowers has served on this committee now, I think you're in your fifth year or starting your sixth year?
Sixth.
Is that right?
That's the sixth year.
And he serves our community so admirably and represents us very well in the community. And I think he's an amazing leader. So, not to say that anyone on this board is not, but I do think it would be wonderful to see him lead the committee.
Here's the other issue I have too. I'm myself, I'm not even asking for consideration because of the time committed that you have to put into the secondary school building committee as well, which is obviously a lot of time and twice as much time, plus. So, that's the other consideration.
I, I would have, you know, the only issue I have is the potential conflicts. I'm sure Mr. Bowers could lead this committee admirably. And I would support, if Cliff wants to be chairman, I would support Mr. Bowers as chairman.
Well, we have a mutual admiration society going on here.
Well, what do you guys want to do?
Well, I think that we ought to continue with Mel as the chair. I'd be happy with that.
Think you're still interested in vice chair?
Sure. I don't, I don't want to take the chairman's position though for a second straight year if someone else is interested enough to it. I mean, honestly. So, I don't know what, I don't know what to say. I don't know what else to say. I'm not, I'm not like overly ambitious and desiring to be chairman again. I was thinking that no one else would be nominated, but Mr. Bowers would be a fine chairman.
Well, we've heard Mr. Bowers say that he would be interested in being the vice chair. Mr. Venezia has nominated Mr. Webster.
Well, we have a...
No, no, we have a motion and a second on the table.
A motion and a second on the table for Mr. Bowers. Okay. Mr. Bowers, do you, do you want to move forward with that? Or would you rather stay as vice chair?
I'd rather stay as vice chair.
So we would take a vote. You've heard Mr. Bowers request that he stay as vice chair. So the motion on the table is for Mr. Bowers to be the chair. We can take a vote. Roll call, I believe. So, Mr. Venezia, do you...
I would vote for Cliff if he wants to do it.
He'd like to stay vice chair. That's what he's just put forward on the table.
Then I'd say no, but otherwise I would say yes if he wants to do it. My voters know that based on his standing...
And I have to ask this question. Does Mr. Bowers vote for himself at this point?
He can.
Okay, Mr. Bowers, what's your vote?
No.
No. Thank you. Ms. Araketti?
I, I say yes, but...
Okay, we have a yes. Mrs. Embriano?
I'll go with Cliff's wishes and say no.
Mr. Webster?
I like Jerry. If Cliff wanted the position, I'd vote yes. But since he denied that he wanted the position, I'll vote no.
Okay. So the motion fails. Five, zero.
Four, one.
Four, one. So would somebody please make a motion?
I made a motion to, from Mr. Webster.
Okay, so we have a motion by Mr. Bowers. Is there a second? Mrs. Embriano, seconds. For the purposes of discussion, is there any?
Again, I think Mel does a fine job, so I mean... That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Any other discussion?
Yeah, I mean, I've, again, I, it's not something that I wanted to do two years in a row. It does take a lot of extra time. You have to spend a lot of time with the superintendent. That's not a bad thing. But yeah, I'll accept it again.
Okay, Mr. Webster has accepted the nomination. Any further discussion?
I'm just putting this out there for discussion. Again, I'll support whatever the committee wants to do. But I do think that it's really important that as we move forward as a committee, support people who have not been chair. There's been a precedent, I think, in the past, prior to my joining the committee, where people equally shared this role going forward. And I think it's helpful to have a mix. So next year, I would like to see someone else step up.
Well, for discussion?
I'm just making a statement.
I, I don't think, in my experience, the chair is just rotated. I think there's been obviously, you know, different people that have expressed an interest, but not everybody can always do it either. And I think that, you know, it's just not a question of, I haven't done it yet, so I should do it. It's a question of, you know, the ability to do it, the leadership qualities to go along with it, and the time that the person has available. It's an immense amount of time, of which Cliff and Mel put in an awful lot of time to it. So, you know, it's, I don't think it's just a matter of rotating. I do agree with Karen that if people are interested in stepping out, then it would be good to see other people get experience. But if nobody says that they want to do it...
I would agree with Karen also.
Yeah.
Which is, you know, why I didn't want to be chair this year. So, you know, I didn't actively campaign to be chairman. So, I would like to see next year, you know, if possible, two new faces.
I mean, just as an example, I'll give you the example of what a selectman, I mean, Bob Misari was chairman for five consecutive years. Bob does a fantastic job of putting in the time, the effort, and he has the leadership qualities for that board. And I think the board gets a lot of respect as a result of Bob's leadership on that. Not that anybody in this committee isn't capable of doing that. But that's just one example of a board that, and I think Shonda Laney may be, although they're probably voting tonight too, I'm not sure, but he may be chair again for the second year in a row. So, there is some, you know, benefit to the continuity sometimes of that happening, especially during projects like this and things of that nature. And then there's just some people don't have the time to be able to do it either. So, at any rate.
What's the extreme?
As far as I'm concerned, that's all I have to say about it.
If elected for another term next year, I'll put myself in that position.
All right, sure, that's great.
Any further discussion? We have a motion on the floor for Mr. Webster to be voted as the chair of the school committee for the 2013-14 school year. We'll take a roll call vote. Mr. Venezia?
Aye.
Mr. Bowers? Mrs. Araketti?
Aye.
Mrs. Embriano?
Aye.
Mr. Webster?
Aye.
Vote passes. Five, zero. Mr. Chairman, would you please assume the position? And before I leave this chair, I'd just like to welcome Mrs. Embriano to the school committee.
So next is, we need to find a vice chair. I know Mr. Bowers has. And I, again, I do want to, I think that Karen is right. And next year, I think we should see two new faces in these positions. That's my desire.
I'll vote Cliff for vice chair.
Okay. Do you have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? I think Cliff does a fine job. Has always done a fine job.
I think Cliff puts in more time than anybody between the building projects and the finance planning team meetings and the halls and the subcommittees and everything else. So, I think it's a good choice. You know, I think those financial planning meetings are so important and that we have a voice on that table.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. I think on this one, we'll also do roll call vote, and then the rest of them will just do a voice vote. Mr. Venezia?
Aye.
Mr. Bowers?
Mrs. Araketti?
Aye.
Mrs. Embriano?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. So that's five, nothing. Okay, next we have secretary. And I've never quite figured out what the secretary does.
Secretary actually is the official correspondent of the school committee in tradition.
So would they, in the past, have taken the minutes, et cetera, or...
Not necessarily, although that is a default role. I served the first year when I came on. I'm not interested in it.
No. I think Janine might be.
Motion for Janine to secretary.
Second.
You can meet with the superintendent. She can tell you all your duties.
Okay.
No, but Karen's right. I mean, there are some, there may be some official... Yeah.
Letters that in gratitude for gifts.
Right, things like that. Yeah.
I think Janine would be a great part, and I also wanted to do it before anybody nominated me.
I would never nominate you for secretary. You need to know how to email. Said with love.
I'd just qualify.
Oh, that's right. That would just qualify him completely. He'd never be able to inform anybody. Okay, so we'll just do a voice vote on this. We have a motion and a second to appoint Janine as secretary. All those in favor? Aye. Posed. Unanimous. Next is a legislative representative and...
Karen, you want to...
Nope.
No? Okay.
I nominate Jerry.
Who is it now?
I think it might be me.
I thought it was Cliff.
It was Cliff? You were there too?
I've been doing it for many years.
I won't...
No, she didn't. No, no, no. Karen just moved to appoint you. And I think I'm, oh, I can't, I can't second.
I think that's good. Second.
Motion by Karen, second by Cliff. Do we have any, do you have a description of, do we have a description of that?
I'm gonna get in this position.
Okay, I just want to read that, just to make sure Jerry...
You've done it before.
"The legislative representative shall keep the committee informed of the status and progress of legislation that affects schools at the state legislature, the legislature that is responsible for making the committee's position on such legislation known to the proper members of the House and Senate." So basically, it's working with Brad, Bruce.
I'm gonna probably need like a budget for this.
May 21st is a meeting up at the State House.
Okay.
You can always meet me for lunch.
Are you okay?
Yeah, she's embossed.
Yeah, my address is McCallman.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? Aye. Posed. Unanimous. Okay. Next we have, I don't know if we're all on here, but we have several subcommittees. Secondary School Buildings Committee is...
That's Jerry.
It's going to be an issue, however, and I want to explain the situation. We have one designated that we appoint to that committee, and that's been Jerry. And then we have two now with Janine, and I should welcome Janine also. Welcome, Janine. With Janine joining the board and Cliff, who were appointed by the joint body of the selectmen and the school committee. So you two are official members of that body and can't be appointed by the school committee to be our representative because you're already a member of the body?
Okay.
So I spoke, I spoke today to the attorney, I talked to, you were there when I talked to Barbara Stats, town clerk, and I spoke to the Attorney General's office today. And they gave me a good, solid non-answer. They wouldn't be definitive, but the bottom line was, they recommended strongly against having three members of the school committee on that committee. And I'll, and one of the reasons she talked about is it could be, it could be an issue, but they really don't have any written law. And the only way that we could do it and not cause any problems is if every SSBC meeting was also posted as a school committee meeting, which would be, and we would deem our own minutes from the meeting. And, you know, it would be an official school committee meeting on that night. So, that was where, the other thing we talked about, what I talked about with the woman from the AG's office was public perception. And avoiding the public saying, hey, the school committee has three people on that, they have the majority of their board on that SSBC. We're not really happy with that. Who's calling the shots here? So that was my conversation with, with the AG's office. And Kathy, you had something else?
Yes, I spoke with our town administrator, Greg Baluconis. And he has contacted town council. And town council is looking into the matter room, and will be getting back to Mr. Baluconis tomorrow. Mr. Baluconis had the same interpretation as I did, that we thought that a majority of an elected body could not be present without posting it as an official meeting. And the AG backed that up. So town council will get back to us tomorrow.
She said there were probably ways you could get around it, but everything you tried to do to get around it, you were basically playing with fire. That's what she said to me.
Can I ask a simple question about representation? There's a difference between being official and people who unofficially attend SSBC meetings. We've had more than two school committee members present at one of those meetings, although not as a voting member. Is there conflict there also with the public meeting law?
No, and that, I didn't bring with me, but the law says if someone is visiting, a member is visiting the meeting, as long as, if all five of us went to a meeting and only two were on the board, as long as we don't deliberate, open the hallway, or have a secret meeting, then that's fine for visitors. So if all, if all five of us visited, that would be fine.
So we should postpone this until we have more information?
Well, that's, that's the question, because if we appoint somebody tonight, we will have three members tomorrow night that are representing the school committee.
Unless of course...
Not representing the school committee, that are school committee members.
Unless, of course, we choose one of the current members who sits on the committee as that official representative.
But we can't, because they're already, they're already appointed members, so now we can't appoint them as our...
They can resign their appointment.
Yeah, they have to, they would have to official, someone would have to officially do that with the town clerk before we appoint them.
Well, just for the record, I am interested in staying on as the appointed member of the school committee. They got four, four years or five years now. I'll, I'll say this. As far as any appearance, getting over the technical or the legal issues, as far as the appearance, it's a 20-member committee.
Right.
The very same three people that they're talking about tonight are already on the committee, have been on the committee for a number of years. So I don't perceive that as a, as a problem because of the large number of people on the committee and the fact that these same three people have already been on the committee. I guess the issue would be whether or not, what the ramifications are, is posting it as a school committee meeting so that we could actually have all three members continue. Because all, all three of us have been on this committee for quite a while. We've all contributed an awful lot to it. And I think we'd all like to stand as voting members. And I'd like to stand as the, the appointed, the appointed member. Now, again, as Mel, somebody suggested, the only way that I think Janine or Cliff could be appointed by the school committee would be to resign as, to resign their appointment, and then we'd have to replace them with a, probably another, another person, another voting member. So...
But we never would vote as a, as school committee
Right.
in, on that, well, at an SSBC meeting.
I can't envision us doing anything like that unless it was something of an emergency when it was convenient for us to do it. And, you know, because we'd be posted as a school committee meeting.
But I think we, I understand your desire to stay on, but I think by having three members tomorrow night, you know, I'm gonna, I want, I found the email that the woman sent me before I talked to her from the Attorney General's office, and I just wanted to read it. So you can see what her opinion was. "If the building committee considers matters that are also within the jurisdiction of the school committee, having a quorum of the school committee on that body could raise concerns about inappropriate deliberation if notice is not posted for both bodies each time they meet. Thus, the best practice would be to avoid having a quorum of the school committee on that body. However, if the subject matter considered by the building committee is not within the jurisdiction of the school committee, then this concern no longer exists. You may wish to consult town council, though, about whether there are any ethics reasons why these members should not sit on both bodies."
So we're not deliberating as school committee there. We're deliberating as a separate body altogether.
Right.
I think it's too gray for us to decide right now.
I'd prefer, I'd say I'd prefer to have town council, I mean, clearly you can go to the meeting tomorrow night.
But I think, isn't one of the requirements that there be an appointed school committee member?
Yes.
I've already volunteered to accidentally miss tomorrow night's meeting so that there isn't that...
In other words, I'll be required to have somebody from the school committee appointed to...
Yes.
To the secondary school building committee?
So you definitely won't be there tomorrow night?
I will forego going to the meeting, just for that reason.
Okay, so we can have two people there.
So you two can go and I'll, until we find out the legal ramifications or whatnot. Barbara Stats had said that as long as we don't discuss as a school committee members on the side and determine how we want to vote for it, it shouldn't be a problem. But she said you're walking a fine line. So, you know, until you find out for sure, you might be better for one of us to not go. So I volunteered.
So providing we're only going to have two members present, and that that stays the same way until we get this settled, I'd be okay with, because we are supposed to have a school committee representative on that, on that board.
Right.
That's part of the charter of that committee.
This is.
So, at this point, I'd entertain a motion, or if anyone else is interested in participating, I'd entertain a motion to appoint a representative of the school committee to the SSBC. And, well, that's, that's off of the motion.
Like I said, I'm interested in staying on.
I'll make a motion to nominate Jerry Venezia for that role.
Motion by Karen, second by Jerry. The only further discussion, I'll say, is the goal should be to get this cleared out by our next school committee meeting. I also think that the chairman of the SSBC should be in, has to be involved here too. So either Kathy or I will, will contact Mr. Krujcev tomorrow. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? Aye. Posed. Unanimous. I like that. Okay. Next position. Athletic, no, Policy Subcommittee. Mr. Bowers has been a longstanding member of that committee. I'd be willing to, you know, I will, I would be willing to volunteer to trade Evaluation Subcommittee for Policy now that they've done, reviewed all the policies.
No, 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 you don't get away with that.
No, no!
Yeah, no, you're not getting away with it.
This is a arm wrestle.
Did you want to stay on Policy?
I have always been on Policy Subcommittee.
Anybody else interested?
And the newest member should also be on.
I was just gonna say, I wouldn't mind learning.
It's a great, great role.
Especially since we've finished...
Yes.
The base document, almost.
Okay, so, can I have a motion to appoint?
I will make a motion to appoint Cliff Bowers and Janine Embriano to the Policy Subcommittee. Could I do them both at the same time?
Yeah. Do you have a second?
Second.
Second by Jerry. Motion by Karen. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Posed. Unanimous. Athletic Subcommittee. Again, Jerry and I have been working on that committee. If anybody else is interested, it's fine, I'd like to stay on, but if anyone else is interested...
I'd like to stay on as well.
And I will make a motion to nominate Mel and Jerry for the Athletic Subcommittee.
Second.
Further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Posed. Unanimous. Communication Subcommittee, we haven't...
Just kept it on hold.
Yeah, I think we can keep that on hold. I think that the district is doing a great job communicating with the community and its shareholders, stakeholders. Evaluation Subcommittee, I am on that with Cliff right now. Looks like I, looks like I want to stay on that by popular demand of the school committee. If anybody else...
I'd like to nominate Mr. Webster and Embriano. Put that on.
That's a good way to learn, too.
Okay.
Anybody else interested? Okay. Do we have a second? Oh, we had a, no, no, Cliff made a motion.
I made a motion.
All right, second by Jerry to place me and Ms. Embriano on the Evaluation Subcommittee. All those in favor? Aye. Posed. Unanimous. Then we have the Finance Planning Team, which is the chair and vice chair. We also have, and we won't make the appointment tonight, we will have to appoint a member to the Capital Planning Commission, but they are not, I'm not, Capital Planning Committee, they're not meeting at this time, I don't believe.
It's done right now.
Yeah, they're done for this year. So we will make that appointment at a later date when we get closer to when those meetings start. And I believe Carl's making a presentation tonight on the Capital Planning Committee. Anything else? Kathy?
And you're going to stay on the NORCAM?
Yes.
Evaluation?
Yeah, we did that. That's me and Janine. Unless anybody else wants NORCAM, which is meets once a month at the Damon Tavern.
7:00 PM?
7:00 PM, yeah.
Hold the bat?
I'll just stay on there. I don't think we need to appoint that, right? It's just continuous.
You have to lay me some.
And Phil's gonna, eventually Phil's gonna teach me how to use the camera. I'm actually gonna come here and I'm gonna do the meetings and be chair at the same time. I'll be the camera. When we get the remote controls, we won't need a cameraman. I can just control everything from up here.
That's just what he wanted, yeah.
Okay. Now that we've done the reorganization, we'll go back to the beginning of the meeting. And at this time, I'll ask for any public input, if anybody's here is to be heard on any items not on the agenda tonight. Okay? So you know what, at this time. Next, we'll move to the student report. And back by popular demand is Jackie Lanzaro. Hi, Jackie.
Thank you. For sports, tennis won last Thursday versus Newburyport. They also had a match today at home versus Hamilton won them. Girls lacrosse beat Revere last week, and they had a game at Linfield today. Boys lacrosse has its senior night tonight. Softball had a game at Linfield today. Baseball beat Amesbury this Saturday, 18 to 0. For track, some athletes attended the Twilight Invitational at Weston this weekend. They also have two track meets this week, and one of them was held today at home versus Triton. Next, last Thursday, student council attended the NEMAS Spring Conference at Tucksbury High School. Unfortunately, I lost. But...
That stinks.
The student council had a really good time, and we learned a lot. There was a half day this Friday. Also, the E-Mark dance was hosted at North Reading High School this Friday as well. This Sunday, 10 student council members walked 10 miles for the Walk for Hunger. And also AP testing began today.
No schoolwork tonight?
Oh, I have schoolwork.
You always have schoolwork. What position were you running again for?
Vice president.
Well, you've got a couple more years to, you can run again, right?
Yeah.
All right.
Who was your campaign manager?
What?
Did you have a campaign manager?
No, it was me. So for Mr. Emmerton's US II History Honors class, we had to complete a project about the home front during World War II. And we had to write about a few different topics. Well, we had to write about five, and two of them are required. So Japanese-American relocation and internment, that one was required. And this one, the Manhattan Project, was required. We also had to choose different ones, and I chose the United Service Organization, the zoot suit riots and rationing. I also have a few pictures. Down here is a sign that says, what you see here, what you do here, what you hear here, when you leave here, let it stay here. And that's example, an example of a sign in New Mexico during the Manhattan Project. There's also a picture here of actors in zoot suits and a picture there of the ration books that were issued during World War II. And I haven't gotten them yet, but... And I haven't gotten them yet, but...
That's great.
Very neat work.
Thank you.
Thanks. Any questions for Jackie?
Thank you.
Good luck.
Yep.
Thank you.
So, you're all set? If you want to leave and go to your, I know there's only, what, how much, a little bit more than a month, no, a month and a half of school left?
Yes.
Unless you're a senior.
Right.
Yes, thanks for coming in.
Thank you.
Jackie will be back one more time, the last meeting in June.
Will Josh be back again, or is he, he's done?
I don't think so, unless he comes next on the twentieth with Kristin Chevlin.
Maybe we should have, that might be a good idea, to have them both come in, since they're both seniors. Yeah. Okay, next, I think we're gonna shift the agenda a little bit, because we have a presentation from Patrick Daly, and I know Patrick has a bunch of teachers here with him tonight, and they're gonna talk about the K-12 iPad initiative.
I stole yours.
Are you gonna be using that?
You're not gonna use the screen. What else do you need some? I stole yours, I'll give it back. You need anything else?
I'm partly, I can't, I should save it.
My staff.
Patrick, right here.
Oh, yeah. Yeah.
My iPads talk to each other? They're not like the droids where I can just touch them and they'll exchange information, right?
There was an app that...
Is it?
Be very careful.
What is, is an app to do what?
So, you can touch them and they exchange information?
Is there an app that gets the Bruins game?
Yes.
Because, there is?
No, there's not.
There's a pay app, though.
I'm on there right now.
All right, that's what I need, the mouth.
On that one, you just ask Siri, who's in the Bruins?
Right.
Thank you.
My phone's in a different way.
Yeah. Yeah. Because if you close them over and protect it, yeah, yeah.
All right, folks, thank you so much. So, we did a, sort of a hybrid presentation tonight. I wanted to share not only the technology we're using through the presentation, but also hands-on a little bit for everyone here tonight. So, what you have in front of you is an iPad that we're using in the district. We're using an app right now called Join Me, which we've used several times with administrators. We've used it with classrooms, and as you can see, we have the advantage of...
This works better than that, see? This works better than that.
Low-tech.
Yeah, exactly.
Actually, this is more like low-tech.
Cricket tech.
I'm seeing double, it's like that. So, we have the added option here of having it right in front of us, which you can imagine is really, really helpful for classroom situations, where if the teacher's presenting something up at the front of the room, the students are able to follow along right in front of you. So, all of a sudden, you've eliminated all the issues you might have with not being able to see the board right in front of you. From a universal design perspective, if you design a lesson this way, and the students are out sick, and they have their connection at home, they can dial right in, they're just, as if they're in the classroom, participating right along. So, this is a great app here. And you'll see, as I switch through here, it should switch for you in front of you on your screen. So, tonight, it's myself, Patrick, Director of Academic Services, Joanne Cofflin, our digital learning specialist for the district, Helen Kelly, grade five from the hood, Maria Bunton, grade six from the middle school, Christopher Ruth, grade seven from the middle school, Shelley Kerrigan for biology from the high school, and I also asked Claudia Brown to participate. She's not able to be here tonight, but I'm just gonna speak to some of her things throughout the presentation, she contributed. We have a lot of fantastic, we're not terming it, I guess, super-users in our district, and these folks represent a few of our super-users tonight. Throughout this year, I know that a lot of the principals have wanted to showcase some of the iPads out there building, so we've asked, and we've kind of held off all of our iPad stuff so we can show you tonight sort of an overview of our program. What I wanted to do was, just very quickly, tonight's presentation is gonna show you a quick digital learning video that Helen's put together that showcases all the work in her classroom. We're gonna see a flipped lesson, so this concept of flipping your classroom, and we'll speak to that a little bit using LearnZillion and BuzzMath. Maria will be presenting that. Chris will speak about the paperless research paper, and he'll also show you a tour of Rome. Science Flipped is Shelley's piece. Shelley's really done a tremendous amount also with the flipped classroom, so. Just a brief history of our presentation and our program here, if I can just, this is the Join Me. Up here, by the way, with Join Me, you can also pause your presentation, you can have students go in and ask questions, you can annotate on the screen, there's all sorts of things you can do with this app, so it's pretty fantastic. So, just to go back just a couple of years, 2010, 11 is when the iPad first comes out. Our technology team, myself included, Joanne, several others in our team, we researched and thought about, do we go with iPads, do we go with other devices, what do we go with? We made the decision to go with iPads. I remember I presented to you, we were over at the Bachelor School. We talked about our technology team and the work they've done, and really increasing our infrastructure, which meant two things. One, increasing the hardware that we purchase and the hardware that we put in for wireless, because you need, in order to have thirty of these in a classroom, you need the kind of wireless that we just didn't have yet at North Reading. So, we met that first for certain areas of the building, and we've also increased our staffing and our personnel. So, we've talked about our vision for North Reading to increase the number of technicians and hopefully the number of digital learning specialists, and hopefully increasing the number of administrators to help oversee this increased staff.
Patrick, is that twenty-five iPads per cart or twenty-five iPads total?
The twenty-five iPads additional. So, in, in the spring of 2011, so after we got through that year, we developed, we came up with our model. We bought five carts, each with thirty iPads in it. Those five carts went one to each school, and then we had an additional twenty-five iPads that were awarded to individual teachers who could use a single iPad with a classroom, or that was their ticket and their key, sort of, to then use the cart in the room. We brought the cart with us tonight just to show you. It's heavy-duty, it's pretty solid. This is the cart we always talk about, right? But if you just flip it there, Shelley, it syncs your applications, so you can put one app onto the MacBook, and then it will sync with the rest of the cart. It charges them. This is one of the biggest issues that a lot of districts have, when they bring in one-to-one devices, everyone's searching for an outlet within a few minutes. So, having that all-in-one syncing station, charging station, it's very secure, no one's gonna be able to walk out with that cart. I mean, we've been talking about how difficult it is sometimes to push up the hall from one link to the other.
You just plug it into the wall, and then you can tread.
Absolutely, yeah. It closes.
That works at the high school, it doesn't short-circuit everything?
Right. It does work. So, we're gonna get up with those. We have five carts, twenty-five additional iPads rewarded, and all of those folks that were in the program, we had, again, we didn't just want to push that cart in the door and just say, you know, who wants a sign, come on down. We asked people to apply for the program, and as a part of applying for the program, these folks worked with the digital learning specialist, Joanne, to come up with lessons. They engaged in professional development over the summer and throughout the year, and they all had to submit a minimum number of lessons, which Joanne will speak to in just a few moments. Oh, sorry, gotta get in here. The following year, we added over twenty-five additional iPads, so we found ways to support twenty-five additional users. This year, we've looked at the idea of flipping your classroom, so instead of delivering content in the classroom during the day, the content might get delivered at night, the night before, and we're gonna talk about this a lot more. And we also invited folks to bring in their personal iPads into the program. So, we also have hired this year a full-time technician. We've increased wireless hotspots in all the buildings to several spaces, the cafeterias, the gymnasiums, I'm sorry, the cafeterias, the auditoriums, and the cafeterias in several of the buildings. Also, any room that has the card housed in it has the full wireless hotspot access. Our goal, of course, is to continue to increase that access to all of the buildings for all of the schools when the middle school opens. I also just wanted to highlight that we have hired our full-time technician, Mike Falcone, he's done a great job this year. In our presentations, we have folks in this room and some other folks, Gretchen Shaw at the Bachelor School, who presented at MasQ this year, which is a technology conference for the whole entire state. You get people from K all the way up to higher education, all the technology professionals from around the state, come to Gillette Stadium for two days, it's a really big deal conference. Gretchen presented there, and had a great program on iPad and art education. Helen Kelly and Joanne have presented, Helen has presented at the Blue Ribbon Program in Reading Public Schools, and they've both presented up at Kristin McCallum Conference, which is sort of New Hampshire's version of MasQ. It's for technology-using educators in New Hampshire, and it's really, really wonderful. I'm very proud of them and the way they've represented North Reading. We also have many teachers who are presenting at other opportunities, the Salem State Collaborative as well. So, North Reading's, you know, in a great place, leading. We were actually, Joanne tells me all the time how other people are always picking their brain, "How'd you set up your cards? How'd you do this idea?" So, very proud of all the work that we're doing here.
So, we have one iPad for approximately every twelve students in the district. We have about two hundred, twenty-five iPads right now?
It works, it works out, yes, it works out that way. We're looking to increase them again. Remember, though, that the models that we have in place, the teachers can sign out, so if they have them, they can sign out that full cart. The batch school, one of the nice things about it going to an art teacher was, a lot of the students get to use it, because that teacher sees all the different classrooms. So, there's definitely a, the ratio can be looked at in different ways when you think of it in that way. We continue what's next. We want to have more opportunities for students to use iPads, continuing our professional development for educators. We're gonna have a whole series of programs next year that Joanne and I have been talking about, to really get what our super-users are doing into the classroom so that more teachers are doing that. A great suggestion that we talked about at our meeting with Helen the other day is, parents are asking a lot of our teachers and about, you know, "If I buy an iPad, what should I get for apps? What should I do?" So, we want to have some workshops and guidance for parents, and also offer some programs like that in the future with our users. As I mentioned, continue to improve our infrastructure and leading to the ability to have it, bring your own device, and eventually someday, a one-to-one program, so every student can have what's in front of you here. That's, we have a lot of different ways of getting to a one-to-one, and we have a lot of ideas about how to get there, but that is one of our goals in the next several years.
Patrick, on the one-to-one, though, you would need some, we'd need a district policy in terms of security, data, think it's lost, we need, we might want to wipe it, things like that, correct?
Absolutely. We need, there are several...
I brought a policy that I'll send to you.
Did you? Okay. Because that's, it's more critical in business, but I think even, you know, the teachers might have stuff on theirs that we don't want anybody else seeing, so we want to wipe it as soon as we could.
Absolutely. Those are the reasons why we haven't jumped to that yet. There's a lot of pieces that need to be in place, the technology, the safety and the mechanisms in place for the mobile device management need to be in place first, the policy needs to be in place first, and really, what I think needs to be in place also is what we're gonna do when they get here. We just had everyone bringing them in, and no one knew what to do with them structurally. It's just a wild thing.
Could be a nightmare.
We want to have, so that's really what I saw flipping your classroom was the first thing, and the folks you'll see tonight, when you see what they can do with that classroom and how powerful it is, now we have a motivation to really start moving this forward. As I mentioned, though, at this time, we have one digital learning specialist for all five schools. It's very difficult for Joanne to be able to do this for all the different schools. She does a tremendous job with what she has. Collaboration is cooperation on steroids. That's a quote from Randy Nelson from Pixar University. It's a quote that Apple likes to use at its presentations. The name of this presentation tonight is From Substitution to Redefinition. And just to quickly frame, this is the thinking behind our philosophy that I work with our teachers on. Substitution would be when technology acts as a direct substitute with no functional improvement. So, watching a video on an iPad, you could do that on another device. Typing something instead of writing it by hand, that's really just substituting a device for something else. Augmentation is that next step up, so it's when the tool acts as a direct substitute, but there is a functional improvement. So, maybe the ability to cut, copy, paste, you can do, you can be a lot more functional with that. If you highlight an ebook and it then collects all of those highlights from the book or from the whole class's books into one place, there's things you can do with the technology you couldn't do before. Modification is when the technology allows for a significant task redesign. So, you'll see some things tonight that are starting to get into these areas. When students use iBooks Author, and they're putting books together, and they're compiling their own ideas, when students are creating spreadsheets for charts and graphs. When Claudia Brown, a high school phys ed teacher and our director of phys ed curriculum for the K-12, shared with me, they use an app called Coach Your Video. And so, the video, you can show an exemplar of a student doing something correctly, either in athletics, throwing a baseball, or doing something correctly for a fitness exercise. The students can then video themselves, and then right within the app on a split screen, it's the exemplar, and it's you, and you're able to use this in a whole different way. She's found that really game-changing in her classroom and also on the athletic field, so that's been excellent. And then finally, what we work for is redefinition. This is when the technology allows you to create something that was previously inconceivable, and this could be publishing work for consumption, where students can share things with the world. And I think when you see some of this stuff tonight, I think you'll see, I think we're already getting to some ideas that we hadn't possibly even considered while we think of what's possible in the classroom. I think you're gonna be excited. This is just a visual. This is called the TPAC, and what this just shows, the teachers who are here with you tonight, and the teachers in our program, they have technical knowledge, pedagogical knowledge, and content knowledge. And what we're looking at tonight is the places where those overlap into what is called the TPAC, the Technical-Pedagogical Content Knowledge. So, this is the idea where you're serving up the content through insight, exciting pedagogy, using the technology as the plate really to serve it on. Pretty exciting stuff.
I never thought of pedagogy as exciting.
You didn't? I think you, I think you made change tonight. I'm gonna hand this over to Joanne, who's gonna speak a little bit to the program, and then we're gonna jump in with Helen's video.
I get the job of telling you about the nuts and bolts of the program, where you're gonna see a lot of the, this is the background as to what we've done so far and how we run the program, so that these folks here can do great things in the classroom with it and give them the help they need. So, my name is Joanne Cofflin, I am the digital learning specialist here in North Reading, and I am the technology coach, basically, for all of the faculty and administration here in the district. I usually meet people by appointment. If they want help with something, they contact me and make an appointment. I will also co-teach with teachers in the classroom using technology, so they will be comfortable with the curriculum aspect, and I would be comfortable with the technology aspect, and we can join together and present those kinds of projects. I also provide professional development, one-to-one, as well as group after-school through our North Reading University, as we call it. And I also research and provide recommendations for the use of educational technology, and I work closely with Patrick and the rest of the tech team on doing that. In terms of the iPad program, I assist with the management of the iPad Pilot Program with Patrick. We currently have fifty participants. We are opening up the program for ten more for next year, and already, people have already been putting in their applications for the program. So, it's very exciting to see so many people get excited about it and want to be part of it. I review and update application questions and procedures with Patrick, participate in the application process, schedule and conduct group meetings with the participants throughout the year. I meet with each participant prior to each of the first two cart lessons that they do part of it. I review and update application questions and procedures with Patrick, participate in the application process, schedule and conduct group meetings with the participants throughout the year. I meet with each participant prior to each of the first two cart lessons that they do with their classes. So, we don't just say, here's an iPad, go ahead and use the card. During their first two lessons with the card, that's a lot of technology in the classroom all at once, if you're not used to that kind of presentation. So, my job is to work with them before they do the lesson. We do a checklist of any, anything that they might need for the lesson, any applications that they might need, any ideas they might not have, or we talk about it. We also talk about lesson extensions. Okay, you're doing this today, but how can we then move forward with that lesson into something else? So, we have this conversation and then I work with them, I co-teach with them on the first lesson that they do in the classroom. And then we repeat that procedure for their second lesson as well. And then, since it's only one of me and there are many people, we only require that many, but if anybody wants to be there for another lesson or wants to confer with me at any time, we just make the appointment and definitely I'm there. So, we work that out as best we can in the schedules. Let's see. I continue to follow up with participants throughout the year and provide individual assistance. I help to monitor each participant's progress during the program and I'll talk about that in a second and some of the requirements that we have. And I also work with special ed teachers this year with iPads for individual students. We had a consultant who I believe got ill, weren't able to replace her, so I've been asked to help with the iPads. One of the things I did today, I went over to the batch elder school and worked with a student iPad there and helped to back it up, to make sure that all the data for the S-Special Apps that they use were in place. Made sure that the operating system was up to date and made sure that everything was backed up to the cloud, as we say, okay? In terms of maintenance of the iPad cards and iPads, I work with Michael Falcone to maintain the iPad cards. We have five cards, once, and we try to update them once a month. That is what we're trying to get into the schedule of doing. Because we are adding more people to the program, we are adding more apps to the iPad. We've also had to figure out how do we get documents and projects off of the iPad to the teachers? So, we've been thinking about how do we email, keep it safe for students, giving it a, it's a student email account. So, there are many, many things to think about when you're using the iPad. We, as I mentioned, we have five cards now and we're trying to get to them once a month. And then there will be more cards hopefully next year for the benefit of our teachers, but in terms of maintenance, it'll be quite, it'll be a task. But we'll get it done. I also work with the pilot participants and administrators to keep their individual iPads up to date. So, once in a while, we have some administrators that haven't updated their iPads, maybe some school committee members that need to update their iPads a little bit too, but we can always arrange that time as well. And then I also review app purchases, requests. Most of what we do, we do have a system in which the teachers will go through and look for a free app first to see if they can find what they want. Not necessarily a content app, but it could be an app that's for application. You'll see the transformation and so forth that we'll be talking about. But there are occasions when we do need to purchase an app, that the app that, we have to pay for one that is the best to do the job, the function. So, we do have a form where the teacher submits their information, what other apps have they looked at and why they think this app is the best one for us to choose. So, we do have a process in which it's not just willy-nilly, just put anything on there that you want. We do have a vetting process, so to speak. But in terms of free apps, we do not really try to, we don't hold up the teachers at all. There are many other districts that I have talked to, people, where they may only add apps once or twice a year. The teachers submit a list and then by the time they need that app, that time has already gone by.
Well, that defeats the whole purpose because the apps are replaced every three months, basically, by something better, so.
Exactly. Exactly. So, I have to say, I really do like the fact, again, that North Reading, what we do is we let the keepers of the cart, so to speak, and the teachers, if they need to add free apps, then by all means, let's do it. And by any time that they need to purchase an app, we try to do it within that week that they apply for and get it out to them on time. So, they know how to download apps and then put it out to the cart. So, we try to give them as much flexibility as possible. But again, there are times when I might need to do it, Mike needs to do it, you know, in order to get it done on time. We also have an iPad Pilot Program website that I maintain with Patrick. It outlines the program, the obligations. It has many, many resources on there, many articles that talk to, speak to best practices of using iPads in education, how-to articles, and then of course, the purchase request and reflection forms. And now, the program itself, and I'll finish this up very quickly because you're going to love what these folks are going to present to you. The program itself, as we mentioned, that the participants must apply to the program. We didn't want to just hand it and say, here, because we have seen technology become a paperweight if the person didn't have the interest to do it in the first place. So, we didn't want that to happen. In the first two years of the program, for the last two years, I should say, participants have been required to attend meetings, partake in professional development, and teach at least two lessons using the iPad throughout the year. During the year, they could either do it as a cart lesson or they could do it as a whole class lesson where the teacher would plug in their iPad to the projector and it would show up there. And then we have many teachers such as the psychologists, the OTs, PTs, we have some of them using them as well, one-to-one. So, that's also happening. Patrick and I review the program at great length this year and have modified the requirements in accordance with our goals of the program, which of course, is to do transformative things with the iPad, not just substitution. We want to move from consumption to creation. And so, in other words, don't just look at a timeline on the iPad, but have the students create a timeline on the iPad that involves writing, involves images, involves video, involves links out to other websites that is going to bring in this full information to the students and for the, for their, their parents and for their other students. The first, what we've changed is that this, in the new program starting next year, anyone starting first year will be asked to do, to do two lessons throughout the year. The second year they're in the program, we're increasing that to five lessons per year. And then people who are in the third year of the program will be asked to do 10. And that's basically equivalent of once a month. And the idea that we're trying to really focus here is that it's not an iPad lesson. It is a lesson that you already do that is now going to incorporate and be transformed somehow by using an iPad. So, it's not planning an iPad lesson. It's how do you incorporate it? How do you use it as a tool? Also, we're asking them not just to take PD, but we're asking some of our people that have been around in the program a lot longer to actually give professional development to others in their building or a demonstration of what can be done to help interest others. And then finally, we're actually going to be asking them to participate in more discussions regarding best practices of using the iPad. We've now had two years to play, so to speak, and now it's time to get down to what do we really want to do with these and how are we really going to use these the best way for our students? And then each participant must submit two reflection forms during the year based on one of the lessons that they have done with their students. So, we're getting feedback as well as to what they think, how it went. Could they have done it without the iPad? Did the iPad make any difference? So, we're trying to collect data as well to find out what's going on. And now that I've put you to sleep with all of the fine details, I'm going to hand it over to these fine people who are in the trenches doing wonderful things with the iPads.
Thank you. So, I just wanted to thank Joanne and I really asked Joanne to just highlight what she does, just so we see how much goes on behind the scenes. So, we really do appreciate moving forward. We put in large cap requests for increasing the number of iPads. Parent organizations are making donations. The North Reading Education Foundation made donations. All wonderful chances to get it in, but we also need to just realize how much goes on behind the scenes just to make this work. And as we increase the program with the amount of hardware, we also have to increase the supports behind the scenes. So, I'm going to start off with Helen. Helen, it was great to make a video for us. I'm going to try and play it right from here. And I think this will take us into elementary schools. As you want, I'm just going to, February was-- So, as I was saying, February is Digital Literacy Month in Massachusetts. The governor called for submissions. Miss Kelly put together a little bit longer presentation and submitted that as to show what we're doing here in North Reading, which we're very proud that she submitted that.
What are you guys working on this morning?
We're scanning the QR code for our boarding book.
They just scan, they scan and then they get their work right on their head. They're scanning.
Yeah.
Couldn't read that that fast.
Hi guys!
Hi!
They're having another classroom.
Other school?
This is a school out in California. The kids have different jobs that they do while we're doing this mystery FaceTime. And one of the kids is actually videotaping. They're just wide shaky a little bit while they're running around the classroom trying to catch everything. But the jobs change. Before we do a FaceTime, we touch base in the morning, say what job was right? And they're rotating the jobs and they're working really well together to ask questions to try to figure out where the other classroom is.
As freshman team four raised, Britain's national debt increased almost twice. It's pretty worrying. The British Parliament thought that they should task the colonists to help pay it down. Sugar is one attack that was implemented in--
What was really nice about this is that children were able to work in their group and then go work independently, each child creating their own page with their own, writing their own pictures, recording their own voice, and then they're able to merge them together and compile it into one book. And they've included QR codes on some of the pages that will bring you to outside links that bring it to life.
That's great. Thank you so much.
Great.
So, Maria Button is going to show you her iPads, a little bit different. It was neat with Joanne, me seeing how many of you were actually looking down at the screen, looking back up. I think you get a sense of the power of having it right in front of you.
Can I--
So, that's not connected in this? It's not? No. That's not connected.
It's not going to be there. You will be using those again with Mr. Ruff.
Hi, everyone. I teach sixth grade here at the middle school. I teach math and science. Last year I taught just math, but this year I have the privilege of doing both math and science. And I am part of the iPad Initiative Program. I'm also part of the Flip Classroom. I also have special education students in my classroom, so I'm a co-teacher, et cetera, et cetera. And one of the things that I like to do for math especially is to use this LearnZillion.com website or to incorporate short video clips that are already, that have already been created by other people, the ones that are really well-done, instead of me spending the time and creating my own. I certainly have done that also. My kids will go to a webpage that I have based on the school website and so on to find the links, or they can type it in themselves, certainly. So, tonight is an example, literally, this is their homework. They need to go into the LearnZillion.com website and they're going to type in this code that you can see on the screen. Sorry, I'm pointing to my screen thinking you can see it there. I'm thinking I'm under the document camera at my classroom. And they're going to be watching three short video clips. And there's also guided practice questions that I'll show you in just a second that relate to that. And then tomorrow in class, we're going to take the information that hopefully they've obtained from doing that homework this evening to an activity in class where they're going to be using the iPads. And they'll go onto my second, well, my most favorite actually, app. It's a Buzz Math program. And they'll be doing these few sets of lessons, sets of questions related to input-output tables, independent, independent variables, because we're in algebra, and also getting ready, of course, for the MCAS coming up next week. So, when the students go to the LearnZillion website, they will come to this screen, excuse me, this is the teacher's version, but a screen very similar to this. And you can see on the left side, there are several different video clips. Their assignment tonight is to watch the first three. And then after they watch each one, they're going to do guided practice questions. I'm going to just show you one quick video here.
How can a table be read to tell us what X and Y represent and how are they related? In this lesson, you will learn to identify the variables and their relationship given a table. Let's review a few ideas before we get started. A variable is a letter or symbol that represents an unknown number. For example, X could equal the pencils Lisa has. Y could equal the total pens and pencils Lisa has. Or a triangle could equal bags of chips. Let's review a common mistake that can be made. A common mistake that can be made is when trying to identify which variable is X and which is the Y. Remember, the X is the independent variable and the Y is the dependent variable. The Y variable depends on the X variable. The X variable is what is changing and then the Y is what is affected by the change.
Okay, I'm not going to show you the whole video clip, but that's what they'll be learning tonight as part of their assignment. And then they have questions to answer and then tomorrow they will take hopefully what they've learned, as I said, and they'll apply it to the next step. And then that affords me the time and my co-teacher, Mrs. Chikacello, affords us the time to really work hands-on with kids in small groups and one-on-one as opposed to spending classroom time watching these video clips. Excuse me for a second, Patrick, this just kind of walked out on the, oh, no, I'm fine. Sorry about that. And then my, my most favorite app that I like to use a lot is Buzz Math. And this should load in just a second here. The kids can actually go onto the internet and create their own student account. It's free. If they want the premium features, they need to have their family purchase it, but that's not really necessary. I was lucky enough to just find a free group or a classroom this year so I could, you know, register my whole class and so on, up to 30 kids. But then next year, it's a, you know, we'd have to pay for that and so on. But what's nice about this is kids can log on and they can go through the assigned lessons that I've created for them. And I know you can't really see this on the screen, but up at the top, there are several options and it's totally based on Common Core. And NCTM is the National Council of Teachers in Mathematics who helped develop the Common Core. So, all of those sections, all of the activities that are available are absolutely fabulous and they are well-done, they're correct. Many times you spend time searching for all these lessons and you get to a certain point, oh, no, that's incorrect, or that vocabulary term is incorrect, we wouldn't use it. But this one I really love. And so, as an example, one of the things they'll be doing tomorrow is they'll be going into this section and they'll be doing, say, completing a table of values as an example. And what is great about this is I can differentiate, or I should say, we, my co-teacher and I, can differentiate on the spot. We can plan it and then we can also adjust as needed in a classroom. And we don't have to have, okay, this one's for Johnny, this one's for Suzie and so on. We can be monitoring this as we move along. So, this one is a very simple question right now because it happened to be on the first question. But this app-- I'm sorry. Oh, sorry, I apologize. I only teach math. I can't-- Sorry.
Don't feel bad, I got a rock, though.
So that's because my hands were talking, my brain was thinking. Sorry about that. And so if students do struggle with that, though, as you saw Alfred would pop out and it wouldn't be, you know, oh, hey, that was foolish, that was a terrible answer. Just a quick little reminder and so on. They can see an example, they can move along at their own pace, and it increases in difficulty. So that's one example of how I flip a class. The other thing I wanted to share was just a couple lessons that my students created in science. As I said, I teach both math and science. And I used an app called EduCreations. And I did this maybe a month and a half to two months ago. And the students were able to do research on their own in class using the iPads on Newton's three laws and... And then they had to create a presentation using the iPads. And we were working on, working from a PBIS science textbook that we use, where they had a previous component of the unit where they had to create these whirligigs, and so these paper flying objects. So they were studying drag and thrust and lift and gravity. And so they had to put it all together. And then the question was, which of Newton's laws do you feel applies to the whirligig activity? So they had to do the research and then they created these presentations. So here, they were taking pictures with the camera on the iPads and then incorporated it into the EduCreations presentation.
This law can be described in this picture because the whirligig was not going to spin in the air unless someone, something, or someone picked it up and rolled it. The paper clips on the whirligig will make the whirligig travel faster because there's more mass, so more gravity is pulling it down towards the ground better faster. The second law says that force equals mass times acceleration. The third and final law says that for every action, there's an equal and opposite reaction. The whirligig hitting the ground has to do with this law because if the floor wasn't there, the whirligig would keep off. But when it hits the ground, the whirligig gets pushed up and starts. Gravity opposes lift and thrust opposes drag. For any aircraft to fly, the thrust must be greater than its opposing force drag and lift must be greater than weight or gravity. Same thing for a helicopter. For a helicopter to hover, all four factors must be equal.
So there's just one other one I'd like to share if I could. And I would like to speak to the fact that this student... This student often is very quiet in the classroom, but he was able to... He does very well in the classroom, but he speaks to his friends more than he wants to participate in the class. So Joey, if you're listening, I'm just trying to say good things about him. But he was able to bring in his humor and his wit into his presentation and still get the information really well. So he had to search for these photographs. Again, they were short and sweet, but will he remember the fact that he incorporated his favorite sport, maybe a hockey, into the activity? Yes.
Thank you so much.
So many more to share.
Chris is also at the middle school level. Very briefly, just talk about the research paper, but mostly, yes, more of them. First of all, at MasQ, one of the presenters I got to see was talking about a paperless research paper. And that right away grabbed my attention to the point where I stayed and kept asking him questions long into the next presenter's time, so we had to kind of leave the room. But it was just this amazing idea of, we have the technology, why not use it? And this really changed how everything was done because we were able to do some editing using the iPads. I was able to grade them using the iPads, provide instantaneous feedback using the iPads. And it was really a time saver as well. We have Gmail accounts for the students. And we use the Google Suite of apps to be able to have access to them so that the students could look up information on websites that I had already approved. And then document their information using Google Drive and share the document with me or another student to be able to get peer editing. And it really did open up a whole new world where we could do it in the classroom, they could do it at home, they could collaborate with other students and just by working by themselves. And it was something to bring a little bit new technology to that old standard of research. It was really nice to be able to see the kids involved, you know, a little bit deeper level. The app that I wanted to present with you tonight, if you unlock the iPads and go to... If you are still on the Join Me app, you can use your four fingers.
No, it actually, we got exited from the Join Me app. It said our meeting was over.
That's okay. You can use four fingers still to swipe. If you take your fingers and swipe or do four fingers and push up, it'll show you other open apps. Use all four. Use four fingers. It'll know whether you're using three or four.
Yeah, you might have to swipe left or right.
I got it.
You've already closed it, so.
You want to click on Roma, right?
Yep. Virtual history is the option I'd like to present.
Jerry might have an iPad within a week or two. He might be buying an iPad. This is excellent.
What I'd like you to do under the title screen, you can see the menu on the left side. I'd like you just to tap on Introduction. And that will bring you to a page called Immersive Reading.
Hey, reading.
No, reading.
What, if you look at the bottom part of the screen, you can see where it says Bubble View. Just tap on that.
Yeah, mine's not working. Look at that. It's Google Street, isn't it? Is this Google Street View?
Not exactly. What they did for the app was to overlay images. So if you look around...
Oh, I see.
It uses what's called gyroscopic technology. The iPad 2, iPad 3, and iPad Mini all have this feature. Now, for the screen, this is going through my iPad. You can see the Colosseum as it was originally intended to be viewed. But you can also see the tourists standing in front of it as if they were there today.
Oh, there we go.
You can see the statues, you can see some of the government buildings.
I hurt my neck, though.
I will say...
I went too far.
If you get motion sick...
Yeah, I do.
One of the things you can also do, if you look in the bottom right corner, you can tap the image.
Oh, this thing right here?
Yep, the little...
Oh, and it'll take you to one of those places.
Oh, it's outrageous.
Yeah.
What is it? Modern day.
And it shows you what it looks like today. So you can see the Colosseum today. And then you can just flip back and forth between ancient...
I can't get to the Colosseum.
And modern. And then again, if you'd like to...
We can't get there from here.
Turn around. You can see how some of the buildings would have looked and what's there today. Now, in the top left corner, you'll see a little I. That will bring you back to the menu if you tap on it. And on the more right side, where it says the expansion of the empire, where it says overlays, you tap on that. That'll take us to an interactive map that shows the expansion of Rome. If you tap on the bottom left, it goes through step by step. So if you want to emphasize how small Rome started and show step by step how it grew, and then be able to discuss some of the major reasons for its growth, just from tapping, you can see how Rome all of a sudden took over the Mediterranean into the GNC. And then you can, if you're doing a lesson on Julius Caesar, you can debate his importance and show how much Rome grew during the time of Caesar. And then by the time, this is prior to it even becoming an empire.
And then if you want to go back.
And then you can see what one of the largest empires of the ancient world actually looked like. And this is a very simple feature compared to some of the other ones that are on this app. But this is one where the students get the visual component.
It's good because you can see when they added the boot. I like that.
It doesn't show the barbarian skin?
No. No. That's the bad.
I like this.
Also, if you go back to the I, as I did on the screen, if you go to the second feature, the capital. Now, the capital, again, in the menu option, you can see the different features. So you can see the bubble view, you can see the overlay. One of the other things I'd like to show you is the 3D component. So if you go down to the second to last, or even the last one, you can choose the Pantheon or the Colosseum. And you can have a 3D model if you tap the bottom left of the screen.
Oh, look at that.
So now you can look at...
It looks like it's floating.
Using the pinch feature of the iPad, you can make it larger. So you can look right down in into the Oculus, the way the Romans intended for their gods to be able to watch humanity.
Look at that. If you make it larger with here, just go like that, it's like you can look inside there. Hit the rotunda. Okay, that shows me where each one is. That's pretty cool.
The Colosseum's also featured. And this does a very nice job showing how the Romans took a Greek amphitheater.
See, you went back to the I. Yeah. Colosseum in 3D. You go back to the I in that little bottom on there.
One of the other nice features of this, as you can see, different parts are labeled. You can tap on the label and have a little Wiki pop up to provide a little bit of additional information.
Oh, yes.
If you hit each section, give your definition. Carl, the outer wall here is just like the wall we put out at the little field recently. Reminiscent.
Probably cost less though.
Right, a little cost a little less.
Cheaper labor. Cost less to build a colosseum.
Right. A little school wall. This is very cool.
Italians do everything better.
Now, does this replace... Does this replace a lesson in a book? Or does it go along with a lesson in a book?
This goes along with multiple lessons. This app specifically, we've been studying Rome for a few weeks now. I've already used this app three separate times. And within the next couple of weeks, it'll be at least two more times. And while this is a pay app, it is nice to know that this covers so many different components that we can keep going back to it. Now, much like you guys have been exploring, students do this exact same thing. So they get so excited to learn about it. And then to be able to say, oh, yeah, when we get to it in the lesson, we talked about that, or I saw that. Now, this is the capital itself.
I didn't know they had cameras back then.
That is one of the comments that comes up very frequently.
It's all hand drawn. How'd you get to the capital? Where's the...
It's still under the capital feature, but I went back to the top.
Oh, okay. I got you.
Under the cap.
Yeah, go to the capital and then hit that.
Kids also who have Latin experience can read this and learn something from it as well. I took seven years of Latin, so I find it's like I'm going to walk through it.
Roots of the words, but not much beyond that.
Do they ask questions about?
It shows you the other side.
It's like a lot of technical words for seventh grade.
But now, we work on, with the Roman Republic, we work on the growth of the Republic. And one of the major reasons why it's so powerful was because of their army. So we're able to look at soldiers. And then we're able to look at...
The army, go back to I.
Back to I and down to the army. So we can look at the 3D model of the soldier. And then this always brings up discussion. Why does he have a shovel? Why does he have pots and pans? So we're able to talk about the garrison towns that the Romans created as they expand the Republic. We're also able to talk about what they possibly could have used the shovel for. That usually ends up being an entertaining component of the class. But we can look at their weapons specifically. And again, we can bring up...
You slide it by the side to side, it shows you...
So it does provide a little additional information.
There's six thousand men.
And then when we talk about some of the other weaponry...
Look at the weapons. That's pretty cool.
We can bring up and have them explore.
Okay, thank you so much, Chris.
That's awesome.
Just want to point out that Shelley and many of the folks in this room, I think actually everyone here, is in the Flip Classroom course. We offered a course this year for some of our advanced users. Some have just taken off with the idea. So we all read a book together, it's taken off. The high school also has a separate group that's just reading the book. And Shelley has done quite a bit with flipping her classroom. So she's going to show us...
Sorry, mine's not interactive. I'm not going to have you check out an app. So basically, what I've done with my biology classes, I teach biology and environmental science and genetics, but I fear biology is a good place to start because our curriculum is so set by the frameworks and with the MCAS beginning in June. So I started flipping, pretty much my first unit I was teaching in December, so the DNA unit. And I've kind of changed how I've been doing it throughout the year. The DNA unit, I did it as like a flipped mastery unit. So basically, the kids just had, you know, it's my first one, so starting off, we had one, two, three, six videos for them to watch. There's some online activities. And it was basically like, here's the stuff you need to do over the next three weeks, do it. And so they would work on it in class, and they had worksheets, and there were manipulatives, and there were some hands-on activities. But it was kind of go at your own pace and get everything done. And then I gave them a survey and they really liked that. They loved being able to work at their own pace. But I didn't like that so much because some of the kids were really good about staying on top and then others, you know, we got to winter vacation, I was like, oh, my gosh, you still have so much to do. And I was, and I just, having them on totally different pages made it difficult to answer all of their questions during class. So then our next unit was genetics. So this was right after mid-year exams. And this one, I also incorporated the students using the iPads to answer questions. So I kind of, I've been working backwards from kind of the flipped mastery to now everybody watches the same video for each class. So this one, I divided up into three sub-units with specific due dates. I made the videos much shorter. I think the average length was about three minutes. And then the students had to answer, for each unit, they had to answer an MCAS question that was related to that, and they had to use EduCreations. So, hold up. This was a great one.
It looks just like Facebook.
Yes, that's Edmodo, which is awesome. It is like Facebook for school. We use it to communicate with the classes. Oh, sorry, this is for my genetics class, a review video. Not the one I wanted. This is the one I want to show. So they had to, it's a multiple-part question. They had to answer all of the parts. We'll see if we can just... So this was where her explanation was great. And the advantage it had, this had over, if I just gave them the MCAS question, had them write down their answer, is for the answer, all they have to do is determine the genotype of the unknown rabbit. of the unknown rabbit and show opponent square. But I said, okay, and also explain verbally what you did, and her explanation.
She was like, okay, this is what we know so far. We already have our two black rabbits. So is the final, the other two rabbits? We know that other half of the black genotype cannot be capital R because we already have our two black rabbits and R dominance to all the other two. So all we have now is one Himalayan and one Tchilah. We can try that Himalaya, Himalayan Himalayan. Let's see if it works. It is not working because we have two Himalayas. And we need one Himalayan.
So she kind of goes through and figures out that it has to be.
R H. Right.
It's the R C H.
Right. Tchilah.
Yes.
That was pretty obvious.
Yeah, you know. And this is what they have to know for MCAS, so pressure's on. So that's the genetics unit. I've also flipped my evolution unit and my anatomy unit, and what I've been doing, I've been trying to find videos, and then I find that a lot of times, I end up spending a half an hour looking for a video that covers what we need to cover, and then I realized it's easier just to make my own videos. It takes 10 minutes, and I don't, they're not professional by any means, and then some of them, you can hear like, my dog comes up, jumps on the bed, shakes her collar, and I'm just like, that was my dog. Don't mind her. So I've used a few different apps. I've used Educreations, which is the easiest. I've used Nomiya, which is a little more complicated, but you can do a lot more with it, and then I've used Explain Everything, which I paid for, but I like Explain Everything best just because I can save the videos onto my iPad, so I have them for future use, and they all go on YouTube, so the kids will watch them sometimes during Power Lock on their phones, because I'd say probably at least half of my students have smartphones now. And so this is just me talking, which is weird to listen. So I've just been importing in my PowerPoints that I've been using for years and adding in notations and things like that. So their homework for this unit, which we're currently doing, is watch a video, take notes, and then they have a question to answer on Edmodo. So for tomorrow's class, they have to watch Circulatory System. Clearly, only nine of my 37 biology students have done their homework so far, but.
It's early.
It is. Eight thirty is really early for them. So then I can, you know, see, so I just give them two questions, basically just making sure they've gotten something out of it and they can respond, and then I can give them feedback based on what they said, and I'm still not totally sure how many of them look at the comments, but I'm writing the comments still in hopes that they do look at them. And we'll be using the iPads. We're starting the MCAS Biology tutoring tomorrow after school. Get ready for that, so we'll be using the iPads there. There's some great, I just joined the, I was kind of a late joiner to the iPad Initiative in November after going to a science, iPads and the Science Classroom Workshop. So there's a great like cells one that's very similar to the Roma app in that it's interactive, and you can zoom in and zoom out and click on things, and you can get basic level, intermediate, and advanced level information. So depending on what the kids already know, you can use that. There's a frog dissection one, which we'll use after the MCAS when we can finally breathe, which will be good for the kids who don't want to touch the frog at least. And it's very interactive, and they have to try to drag the scalpel and identify the organs and everything. So yeah, it's pretty, it's pretty cool. So, and we do need more carts because there have been so many times when I've wanted to use the iPads in class, and it's like, other people, you know, so there are a lot of us using them, which is great, but it means I've booked the iPads for our frog dissection lesson for the middle of June already, so I definitely have them. Thank you.
That's great.
And then you can see just how much work and effort goes into these lessons. What they've said, though, is, and what we need to get out to everyone, is that that work up front, that heavy amount of work up front, really will lead to increased opportunities for all of the students in the classroom. I think they'll all say it's transformed what they're able to accomplish. Flipping, when students are doing content at home, you have that time to differentiate in the classroom, really get at some of these things that we talk about trying to reach all students. So thank you guys so much for this presentation. I know we spent a lot of time here, but I think you all got a real good hands-on example of what we're doing. So any questions?
Yeah, anybody.
Thank you. Thank you for the iPad.
Any questions?
Patrick, how long do you estimate until we don't need teachers anymore? Is that something that's around the corner?
I never have.
Never.
I have an answer for that.
Because it'll help us with our long-term budget.
The answer for that is never.
Never?
Never.
Okay.
Because, it was your question, I called it, but computers will work on content and they teach content, we teach students.
But you know, when you watch that, you start to think that, you know.
No, but in fact, I've been reading a lot of studies about the online interactive education, and the biggest issue is with that is the isolation and the inability of the students to interact with other students. So they're even having, with those online classes, they have, if it meets three times a week online, they have the students get together one of those days in order to have that interaction. I think we need that, because if not, we'll become an isolate, everybody will be isolated in the country all, which we kind of are now.
I think the role of the teacher is evolving, and I think that there's different ways to run a classroom. I think hybrid is the best. That's really what you saw tonight, what Shelley's showing you there is a hybrid, that's.
Yeah, I can only talk about what we do in class, but we actually do things in class.
Tremendous.
Yeah.
Maybe things you're unable to live in before.
The stuff where they actually need more help versus me just talking to them. Now they can watch 10 minute video of me. They just can't escape me now.
I have a bunch of questions. I'll try to keep to a few. The first one's for Joanna. Do we have regular old computer class anymore, or is that, remember we, in the middle school, the kids had to come down to, come down to here, or?
We still have, in the middle school, we have the general computer class. Sixth grade right now is focusing on robotics, I believe, and in the seventh and eighth grade, they do some programming and other apps where they do Logster and Create, which is an app that allows you to make a poster, basically a digital poster, but can connect out to other websites and demonstrate learning and so forth. So we do still have that curriculum here. In the elementary schools, they still have the lab time during the school day, once, twice, once a week for half an hour, once a week for half an hour, in which that is varied because we power, power professionals in the elementary schools. They are split between two schools, and in terms of, their job is to work with the teachers on the projects that the teachers want to work, work on in the lab. So we don't have a real, we don't have an actual curriculum at this point for the elementary schools. It's more fluctuating, but it is something that we need to work on, and so that things will flow from one grade to the other. It's always, some students might learn on PowerPoint, some students might not, but then we're also trying to move towards, you don't actually teach a specific computer skill, per se, as they utilize the iPads. But things like programming and stuff is definitely a skill that you would have to have a class to teach. So we're trying to work things out as to what do we really need to have in the labs, what could be done in the classrooms, and we're working on, and we are changing it as 21st century education is changing.
I would favor anything we can do to add more programming classes and skills to the curriculum, and especially for girls, because one of the big issues is the lack of women in the programming field, and I think that if we could introduce that at some point, that would be, that'd be great. Two other quick questions. How do we prevent students from downloading apps to the iPads, because they're connected to the wireless when they're on them, correct?
They don't have the password to the account.
Okay, so they can't, that's good.
And we can also.
And there's not wireless in every room.
There's not wireless in every room. And also, we can, if we need to, put restrictions on the iPad to even take off that icon, so they can't even access the store.
They can't access the App Store, okay.
Correct.
And then the final thing is, you know, a lot of people look at this stuff and they say it's a novelty, it's not really changing things, we're just doing things a different way, but it's not improving it, anything. So the question I have is, how do we, how do we measure the impact? So one would be increase in student interest in what they're learning, correct? I mean, you can judge that by kind of looking at them and their participation. But what about, you know, the impacted results? Are they learning more? Are you able to cover more of a topic, get more in-depth than you used to? Are they learning better, meaning they're getting better grades and better understanding? And I guess overall, is student performance improving?
Right. Right now, part of that is covered in the reflection form that we ask the teachers to fill out at least two during the year. We've only been in this now for two years, so we really are still kind of finding our way, but I think, as I mentioned, we're now starting to hone those iPad skills and the way we use them in the classroom. So I think, we don't have that data as of yet, but definitely it is something that we will be booking to do in the future, and how do we actually measure it? I'm not quite sure yet. I think Patrick and I and everybody else in the program will have to get together.
I think that's going to be tough to do. That was a question I had too. How do you measure how much more learning's going on based on the?
And it's, a lot of it's qualitative, and like you said, you know, there are less classroom management issues because more students are engaged now and things like that. Does anyone here want to tackle that question just quickly?
Not, two things. I've been presenting recently, and one of the things that I always say is, I don't have behavior problems in my classroom. My kids are always engaged. My kids always have something they can be working on, and something they can be doing, something they want to be doing. They look forward to projects that we have ongoing, things that are happening. And the other part for me was the amount of feedback I can give kids on the spot. I can assess students immediately and quickly. I still take home lots of papers, but what I take home is very different than what I used to take home. Right now, if we're doing a project, I can have kids take a quick assessment, I can have the other kids go and work on something and work with the kids who are struggling. And I'm able to do that on the spot, not the next day, after I bring my book back, back from being home and going through all their work.
Helen, I think you also, I think you also noticed, you were looking at some data earlier in the year as to how students were performing, was it a benchmark test, or I'm not sure exactly, I don't recall the specific name, but you mentioned that there students were, no one was failing. Everyone was succeeding, and that's part of the data that you were looking at. So if we do, we are seeing some differences, but can we make sure it's always replicated? We haven't been at it long enough.
And I'm planning on looking at, because I only flipped one unit per semester, and I flipped the entire second semester of Biology, so I want to compare the mid-year exam grades this year compared to last year, and then the final exam grades, and both years I've had two academic level Biology classes, one that is co-taught with a language-based program. So in terms of the two years, they're very comparable, so I'll be interested to see if I can actually get that data, if there's anything significant of note, hopefully.
I just wanted to add that one of the benefits that I find, I'm one of the key group of carts, and we have a smaller cart, I have 10 iPads in my classroom, which is fabulous, but my co-teacher and I have been able to split our classroom also, and we just strategically split them, and the kids will do a paper type of activity or a hands-on activity with, for about half of the class, and then the other half, they'll use the iPads and do a reinforcement type of activity. And it doesn't even matter which one they do first, but it's different modalities, so we're reaching out to different learning styles, which has been fabulous and awesome with the kids. I don't think I could give the data to back that up, that they're learning better. I know they're learning more.
I think one of the most important things that parents need to remember is, we're teaching kids to learn the way they're going to work when they get out of school. And I really don't like the term digital natives, but that's what all of these students are. They grew up with it versus us who had to kind of, well, some of us, some of us older folks who had to kind of make ourselves.
AI program.
You're a younger person, yeah, you're much younger. We had to make ourselves learn and understand how to use this stuff and make it effective, and.
We're making them lifelong learners.
Right, and if we teach them.
And one of the ways by doing that is flipping the classroom, by having students going out, and yes, we're providing them the guides and so forth now, but they're learning a way to learn. I agree.
And you can't see, you know, it'd take a long time if you had to build like cardboard or clay 3D models. I don't know if Isarouf would be able to do that with Rome and things like that.
We tried it with Play-Doh a few years ago.
Wasn't as effective.
I thought Play-Doh was Greek.
No, some of the things just did not look appropriate, so I certainly wouldn't want them recorded and displayed.
Right, exactly. And Jerry, you got Jerry confused now, because he's thinking we're in Greece with Play-Dohs.
I thought Play-Doh was Greek.
No, we're real. But that, that kind of stuff, you just don't get a chance to see that unless you go to Rome, and we're not going to take a class to Rome, I don't think, so. It's good stuff. It's great.
If you just want to send a teacher, though.
Oh, you're going to.
We put that in the budget, right?
Yes, yeah. Well, great, thanks a lot.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
What do you get, do we get some sort of discount?
I don't know how it works.
I'm sorry.
We'll be right back.
Can you get a discount, do we get a discounted price when we buy these, or is it pretty much retail?
Thank you, Joanna. Nice job.
There are some discounts when you buy them both.
Thanks, Chris. That was great, Roma.
That's good stuff.
I can't remember that. That was fascinating.
Yeah, I thank you.
Thank you. Oh, Patrick, these are the books that Mel told you about. Thank you.
That was good stuff.
That was really cool.
Yeah.
What I do in my speed is I go on Google Earth.
Oh, yeah.
And I'm a big geography guy.
Yeah.
And you go all over the world, zoom in.
Right.
And find that little spot.
Exactly.
And then look for pictures there, see what it's like.
Stuff is so cool. Well, that was really good stuff. I mean, in terms of if we need an incentive to try to find more funds for more iPads, I really would like to see us work pretty rapidly and aggressively on a BYOD policy. I mean, we can't obviously force kids to buy, and parents to buy devices, but if kids have devices that they can bring to school, we should, we should figure out that fairly quickly.
The challenge is, we need more infrastructure to support those devices.
Right, and that won't be till the new schools are completed, right?
And even after the new schools open, we have to make sure that the bandwidth will accommodate all of the devices that would be brought in as, and when we think about the elementary schools, we want to develop that, because you heard Helen Kelly, who is at the elementary school, there's an awful lot going on, even though we had mostly middle school and high school teachers here. And so we're, again, exploring ways to expand the infrastructure to support more devices, because devices take up space.
And the whole flipped classroom idea of having the kids basically watch lectures/videos at home and then be able to discuss, have more time to discuss in school, I think is.
Well, Dr. Daley is teaching a graduate-level course on the flipped classroom here in North Reading, and he teaches it at University as well.
Great. Okay, that was awesome. Thanks for bringing that in.
You haven't got a, okay, we do have a forum.
Yeah, we have a forum. Next, we'll go back up to continued business, and we have a report on the Secondary School Building Committee.
Yes, the last Secondary School Building Committee was held on Wednesday, May 1st, not Tuesday, April 30th. And the meeting began with a motion to enter into executive session for the purpose of discussing contract negotiations and potential litigation. In terms of the construction update, the first concrete pour for the first floor of the new high school took place on Wednesday, May 1st. It was very exciting. It was probably a sick, no, almost a 24-hour day.
Yes.
For that to take place. The second pour will take place this Wednesday, May 8th, and Mr. Bowers and Mr. Venezia are on the construction site daily. Mrs. Embriano, I'm not sure if you're on a daily.
Janine's there quite a bit.
But you're there a lot, I know. So I'm not sure if any of the school committee members would like to provide additional information.
Well, Janine and Cliff and I go to the construction meetings on Thursday.
On Thursdays.
And as you can see, they started the steel erection on building, we call it Building C. Which is the high school administration area and the media center. That is expected to be completed by May 21st, and then they'll move from there to start erecting the steel on as a, Janine, which will be the auditorium, the theater. They're making progress with the grading and with the roadway that's going to be coming down towards the high school parking lot. down towards the high school parking lot. We're in the process of working on some of the bids that have come in, and that was part of the purpose of the last, the last meeting, some of the bids, some questions on them, but we'll get that resolved. I don't know, Janine, anything you wanted to add to that?
It's pretty-
Yeah, it's, it's, it's moving along. I mean, all we have to do is go out there and take a look at it.
Really fast.
And you can see, the foundations are in, I think the footings and foundations are being completed on the gymnasium area.
Yes, that's a D.
D, yeah.
Yeah, I have to think.
D, yeah, D, 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 building a D wing, whatever you want to call it. And that, I think, is the last building that the steel will be erected on that particular location, so it's, it's moving along at a pretty good pace.
In terms of the design update, on April 17th, during April vacation, Dr. Daley, the two principals, Principal Bernard and Principal O'Connell, and I traveled down to Connecticut to a furniture showroom with our architect and with our furniture representative. So we took a look at different samples of furniture to try out. We're having furniture shipped up to the school district so that students and faculty will be involved in making the determinations, but right now, we're just selecting samples to be shipped up. So that's in process as we speak. And as Mr. Venetia just referred to, there was a resilient flooring bid that was scheduled to be opened last Thursday, May 2nd, at 1:00 PM. I'm assuming that that did move forward. The zoning board of appeals hearing on the appeal by two abutters concerning the site plan for the new middle school high school project was continued until June 20th, 2013. Members of the SSBC that did attend that hearing provided an update at the last meeting. And the next SSBC meeting is scheduled for tomorrow, Tuesday, May 7th, beginning at 5:30 PM in the modular high school cafeteria.
Cliff, we gave an update on the, on the steel and the concrete and everything. I don't know if you had anything to add.
Only that the, the footings are marked out all the way to the back corner of the gym, and are moving that way rapidly. I would expect that by this time next week, we'll have all of those footings in, and maybe some of the walls formed up.
Good.
Any other questions, comments? It is moving along quickly. It's amazing how fast they get that steel up.
Yeah, it is.
Okay. Next, we, we had a few, we have second reading for many of the sections of Policy Manual, Section J, and then we have first readings of some, which we had some questions on and comments in the last meeting. So, if we all go back to the beginning, we have, first one is Section JAA, which is simply a changing of certified and non-certified staff to faculty and staff, and then we changed a section of the Mass law, right?
Correct.
Move to approve the new revised policy, equal educational opportunities, JAA, second reading.
Second.
Motion by Karen, second by Cliff. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? I hope that you weren't. Right, okay. I assume you'll be staying through all of these, then, correct?
Very much.
Okay. Janine was not present for the-
I read them.
She wasn't present for the first reading, though, so.
I read them.
Next, we have JBC, Cliff? Or was that the next? Yeah.
School admissions, we changed a few words related to, added, added some words, gender identity or sexual orientation in the first paragraph.
Move to approve the new school admissions, JBC revised policy for second reading.
Second.
Further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Unanimous. School admission residency?
JBCA-R, there was a change due, we may use assistance of school departments, attendance officer.
And I believe we took that out because we don't have an attendance officer.
Because we don't have one.
Correct.
And that's the only change.
That's the only change, yeah.
Move to approve the school admission residency policy, JBCA-R, for second reading.
Second.
Further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? One abstention.
Next one is assignment of students to schools, JBCCA, and we changed the last word in that policy from system to district.
Move to approve the assignment of students to schools, revised policy, JBCCA, for second reading.
Second.
Further discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Unanimous. I mean, four in favor, one abstention. Jerry, you messed me up there.
The next one is JBD, school dismissal precautions, and we changed a word in the, under item two, children of estranged parents, the word can was put in-
Missing.
-be released only upon request of the parent of the court, who is directly responsible for the child who is the parent or guardian registered on the school record.
Move to approve the student dismissal precautions, second reading of JBD.
Second.
Further discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? One abstention.
Next one is JGCD-E, and-
We just added a nurse, we changed two nurse names, right? Two nurses' names.
We changed the names to the current names of the personnel.
Move to approve the medication order, paraguardian letter, which is JGCD-E, for second reading, or first?
Not second.
Second.
Yeah, second, and Jerry seconded. Okay. Further discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? One abstention.
All right, and policy, JGFA, maintenance and control of chemicals used in science instruction. We changed the Massachusetts Department of Environmental Quality Engineering to Department of Environmental Engineering, Environmental Protection, which is consistent with what it is called today.
Move to approve the maintenance and control of chemicals used in science instruction, policy for second reading, JGFA.
Second. Further discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? One abstention.
Policy, JGFB, was entitled, storage and disposal of solvent stains, fuels, and waste in industrial art shops. We deleted the policy because we don't have industrial art shops anymore.
Do we need to do a second reading of the deletion?
Yeah, I think we do. Move to delete JGFB.
Second.
Further discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? One abstention.
Policy, JGG, bus transportation. We changed the legal reference to Mass General Law's Chapter 71, Section 7A.
Move to approve, approve JGG bus transportation for second reading.
Second.
Further discussions? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? One abstention. And here comes the-
This is my favorite policy of the night.
The hazing, hazing regulations.
Ah, fun.
And the next policy is JHCD-R, hazing regulations. And we had some, some changes that we made to this from a first reading. We've actually deleted a great deal of, actually the whole first page and the first paragraph at the top of the second page, and the revision puts, the North Reading School Committee prohibits any act of hazing in North Reading public schools. Policy reflects the content of Mass General Law, Chapter 269, Sections 17 through 19. And then we have the, the law actually repeated or noted right in the policy.
This for first reading, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, it is.
Move to approve policy, JHCD-R, hazing regulations for first reading.
Second.
The one thing, Kathy, I'd want to make sure we do here is that next year, Mr. Bernard, whatever, if we agree to this or some other wording, that next year, Mr. Bernard has his student handbook reflect what this policy-
Should match.
Should match the first few words of this policy.
Yes.
Okay.
I missed who moved and seconded, I'm sorry.
I made the motion, and Karen seconded.
Thank you.
Any discussion on this? Janine, you can vote on this one because it's a first reading.
Okay.
Do you have any questions?
Go ahead. I just had noticed a wording that I didn't quite understand. It's not so much that I didn't understand, but it says whoever is a principal organizer or participant in the crime of hazing is to find here and shall be punished by a fine of not more than $3,000, or punishment in a house of correction, for not more than one year, 100 days.
Oh, yeah, we didn't fix-
Yeah. I didn't know if that was-
That, that was supposed to be taken out of the statute.
The 100 days.
Yeah. Well, whatever the statute says, I'm thinking it might say something about a fine, I don't know.
Or both such fine and imprisonment.
Yeah.
I don't know if we can vote on this because we don't know what it says.
Yeah. Do we have a copy 269 here?
Carl does.
If I can pull it up, please continue when I-
Yeah.
So should we move to the next one?
Next policy is JHCE-R, regulations governing handling of body fluids, under item four, when cleaning up body fluids that have spilled, disposable gloves should be worn and disinfectant of bleach. That's the change that we had made, is be worn and disinfectant.
Okay.
Move to approve for second reading, JHCE-R.
Second.
Further discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? One abstention. Okay. Carl?
Yes, the correct verbiage, when you look at that line that says, for not more than 100, more than one year, 100 days. It should read, for not more than one year, comma. So, the 100 days should be removed.
So, we can, we can rescind the motion to the second and then make another motion to have it approved.
Would the 100 days changed?
Right.
Right.
Deleted.
So moved for approve.
Your motion to approve as amended, first reading?
First reading.
Yep.
Somebody seconded me.
No.
Second.
Further discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? You vote.
Maybe not, because it does say second reading.
Oh, no, that's first reading.
Oh, okay.
So, you in favor? Okay. Okay, so unanimous. Because we didn't get to it last week.
Yeah.
JHCF, reporting suspected child abuse or neglect. And we deleted the first two paragraphs of the current policy.
Now, we had, we had an issue here with the personnel, remember, there was personnel and employees. Has been corrected? Okay.
Yep, I have no problem with this.
Okay.
Move to approve JHFC for second reading.
A second.
Further discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? One abstention.
And the next is JHFB-R, late-night, overnight student travel. There's a couple of typos in the third section of that, which is scheduling, changing, considered to, changing the word to read considered structural, structured learning time, and under three trip itineraries must leave enough time for drivers instead of drives. Under fundraising, the last word on the first item changes from activates to activities, and funding, fundraising should be consistent with policy, DFO.
Can I have a motion for approve, second reading of JF, JHFB-R?
Move to approve for second reading, JHFB-R.
Second.
Further discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Unanimous. Act four in favor, one abstention. Sorry, Janine.
Next policy is policy, JIA, centralized kindergarten policy. It's basically deleted.
Because?
We don't have one.
We don't have a centralized kindergarten.
Chairman, move to delete, it's first, second reading, policy, JIA.
Second.
Further discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? One abstention.
Next is JIBB, Student Advisory Committee, and we're deleting a section, the last, actually the last half of the third paragraph, and replacing it with, members of the Student Advisory Committee shall be ex officio, non-voting members of the school committee without the right to attend executive sessions at the beginning of the school year. Calendar of attendance identifying which member will attend each school committee meeting will be developed and distributed. Members of the Student Advisory Committee shall be subject to all school committee rules and regulations.
Period.
Period. Need a period there. Get that period missing.
Otherwise, it's a big part of the sentence.
Can I have a motion to approve as amended with the period?
Move to approve JIBB for second reading.
I like to call it G.
JIB, yes.
Second.
Further discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? One abstention.
Next policy is JIBR, Student Advisory Committee Procedures. The second bullet, under election, we're deleting, students who wish to be nominated must submit nomination papers with signatures from at least 40 members of their class and at least 10 other members from other classes, as well as four teachers, and replacing it with, the principal should determine the procedure for nomination. And under chairperson, delete the entire section.
I just have a question. I'm assuming this is, this is a procedure, but it doesn't indicate when it was initially adopted. I'm assuming it's the same as the JIB policy, is that correct?
It didn't have anything on it in the policy manual, so Ann has added it.
Oh, this is, okay.
So, this is brand new?
No, it was in the policy manual, it just didn't have any dates at the bottom of it previously.
Gotcha.
Okay.
Move to approve, second reading, Student Advisory Committee Procedures, JIBR.
Yes, she said JIB. Jerry, she said JIB. Yeah, we seconded it.
You said JIBR, it should be JIBber.
JIBB, and I said it in an accent.
I'll second.
Okay. Further discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? None. One abstention.
Thank God.
And we're done. I think we've gone pretty much through the whole book, right? Now we start over again.
Listen, Mike, congratulations, because it's agonizing just to vote on them. I can imagine what it must be like to go through them word by word.
It's like reading the dictionary.
It was breathtaking.
Okay, next, we have the Fiscal Year 14 Capital Improvement Program Report from Mr. Nelson. Carl?
Yes, thank you. I think it's worth pausing for a minute to kind of appreciate a process that was initiated for the first time this year. As the committee knows, heretofore, the capital process changed this year, and previously, the administration would recommend to the school committee, who would then recommend to the selectmen on to town meeting. This year, the process changed, and what happened was a CIPC committee was created, Capital Improvement Planning Committee was, was created. I happen to be a member of that committee. And what happened was, each department head across the community recommended capital projects through their department into the Capital Improvement Committee. We vetted these requests in a far more, I think, stringent fashion than the town had experienced previously. We literally went, made road trips to the police station, to the fire station, to the DPW garage to look at all of the equipment that was being nominated for replacement or renewal. So, uh, the process, you might say, changed in that a so-called independent group attempted to vet the individual process, uh, projects that were, uh, brought forward. I should, uh, list the names of those members who served on the capital planning committee. Don Kelleher was elected by us as chair, Joe Fody as vice chair, Elizabeth Poveo as clerk. Also serving were Greg Valukonis, Abby Herlbut, Robert Misery, and myself. So what happened was the committee actually, um, reviewed a total of 19 requests that totaled one and one-half million dollars. In addition, there were seven additional requests made out of enterprise funds, which are handled in a slightly different fashion, as you know. As the process unfolded, Don Kelleher, in his role as member of the finance committee, also is putting forth a different funding mechanism for capital improvement. As we know, presently, the amount of dollars that are available for capital projects are a direct function of what free cash is available to the town at year end. Some years, there is a lot of free cash, others years there aren't. Free cash, of course, is primarily a function of two factors for North Reading. First, how, uh, heavy the snow was that year, meaning how much money is left in the snow account, and B, uh, what turnbacks there are. In other words, uh, budgets, uh, that weren't spent and those funds then become available for the following year. So those are the two factors which really meant that the capital planning process was, was variable and, and didn't match up with the needs, if you will. So, um, while it has not yet been approved by, uh, selectmen and others, uh, Don and the committee have put together a funding plan which actually does what many communities do, that being, um, the identification of money in the budget for capital planning, a fixed amount of money, so that there'll always be, uh, a percentage of the general levy available for capital planning. Again, I don't believe that process has yet been approved or implemented for FY14, but I think that's the direction that this committee will probably go in. And of course, very quickly, the pluses of that is you'll always have a fixed amount of money identified for capital planning, but on the other hand, that takes money out of the operational budget, if you will, because there, there would be money earmarked for this purpose, just as it is for health benefits or other factors. So I think, I suspect there'll be more discussion about that as time moves forward.
I believe, didn't we discuss it at the finance planning that it wouldn't, would it be almost a revolving fund or an enterprise fund or some kind of fund that they would establish with this percentage? But I, but I also believe the idea was to keep it, yes, we want to put this percentage in, but to keep it flexible in, in case on the, on the operation side, there was just money needed to, to do, you know, core functions to run the town and the school district.
Kyle, are you suggesting then that we're paying cash or is that, is that money for bonding as well? In other words, would be able to bond?
It would be for both, yeah.
So the cost for bonding would be?
Yes.
Okay.
Both points well taken. There would have to be some flavor added to this, if you will, because, uh, I would hope that the community, the, the town would not spend it just because it had it. You, you still have to have a ranking mechanism and an ability to evaluate the, how deep the need is for these things. And then you have to have a mechanism to determine how much of it comes out of free cash.
Right.
And how much of it gets bonded. And I think that in the first foray, uh, those two answers have to be developed a little bit. So, that's a little bit of a background. In your packet, you see a, a ranking sheet. The members of the committee, as I noted, assigned ranking to all of the proposals that came through the, the system. And, uh, if you look, this isn't numbered, but if you look at the page that is headed at the top, capital FY 2014 ranking sheet, this is the back of the second page in, you'll see the, uh, requests that are being considered. No line has yet been drawn to allow you to know what will be funded. That, that has to be decided and then I'm imagining that at Friday morning's finance planning team, there'll be some discussion of, of that, that, uh, subject, so.
Carl, I think that's one of the other key things is the goal is to get capital improvement items on the June town meeting warrant versus voting on it in October, which we kind of slipped into over the last several years, to keep all the money spending items at, in the June town meeting.
It, thank you, that's true. It's, it's my sense, I, I would also offer to you that, um, the initiatives that were put forth and proposed by the school department fared quite well in the ranking. As, as Kathy knows, uh, this, our committee interviewed all of the applicants and the school department probably with, for 90 minutes, uh, were questioned by the members of the committee, as well as all of the other department heads across the town. It was a time-consuming process.
Mm-hmm.
So, um, I, I would, I won't go through the whole list, but I'll highlight it. The top priority as voted by the committee is the continuation of the equipment replacement plan for computers for town hall. And that amount was $35,000. And then moving down, uh, for example, the second one is the town's road program. Every year, town meeting allocates some funding for town roads and the amount requested by the TPW for this purpose this year was $300,000. It's not necessarily, necessary that that amount be allocated to their request. In other words, they're second in ranking, but the C I P C or the selectmen could say, well, gee, that is a, the second priority of the town, but only for X amount of dollars. And I think that that is a likelihood, given the fact that I believe the state legislature is probably going to increase highway funding for all municipalities above, uh, recent levels. So, some of that money can move over to that side of the ledger. You'll know, you notice that the fourth item down, the school department rack truck, that was the number one priority of the school committee and school administration, so that is ranked fourth. You notice number five, uh, the second school department, uh, no, interestingly enough, the, the committee, uh, made, this was the school department and school committee's third, uh, priority, but the committee ranked it second for the school department. That being the hood school energy system upgrades, uh, that would allow for, uh, off-site control over the energy system at hood school. That's, uh, the fifth ranking for the town. And then moving down a little bit, you do see the school department's iPad initiative that is, uh, in the top half of the rankings, um, and then followed a little bit farther down by the school department's asbestos abatement program. I, I wouldn't be surprised if, um, funds for all of these school department, uh, requests are going to be considered. There'll be some discussion at some level about, uh, what the amount of available funds are. You see, the funding source here, there is some bonding and there are some available funds, which means from free cash. Because the town's revenue estimates for FY14 were conservative and because we've learned that the allocation forms for state aid might be as much as $100,000 higher than what we had used as our budget, uh, projections, it's quite possible that those funds could be earmarked for free cash capital investments, which would mean, um, you'd move probably as much as halfway down the list. That's the hope. So, that's, uh, a quick summary, and then as you noticed in the, uh, greater, later in the packet, there is a detailed description of each of the requests that, uh, school and town has made. That's a brief summary of where we stand.
It's actually a really in-depth report. It's really good. Jerry?
Kyle, um, are the selectmen going to put all these in the warrant? Are they going to determine which ones are going to go on the warrant?
I think it's the latter, is my understanding.
Okay, they're going to make a determination what they're going to put on there?
Yes.
Okay.
I don't know that for sure, Jerry, because I'm not sure they've addressed this in public session yet, but that's what I understand in the discussion.
And I, I would share the chairman's comment, this is a tremendous piece of work. I mean, this, this, a lot went into this.
Yeah.
And I, I, I think the description and the, and the pictures and everything, that's fantastic. Really is. It's, it's great job. Great job.
It's the kind of thing you'd expect in a private business if you were going out to spend some money and they really did a lot of good research.
Good job in getting us in the top six or seven there for each of the
Yeah.
three categories we had, yeah.
Any questions for Carl? Great. Thanks, Carl.
Thank you.
And Carl's right, I think this will be one of the major topics of discussion Friday morning at the finance planning team meeting. Okay, next, Kathy, community, community impact team update.
Yes, very quickly, um, in March of 2012, the community impact team was launched. There are five people that sit on, uh, the board, if you will. It was the vision of Chief Michael Murphy to start a community impact team and he was joined by Bob Misery, representing the board of selectmen, um, Rita Mullin, representing Parks and Recreation. When we had a, a youth services director, um, she sat on the board. We have been told that a youth services director has recently been hired. I haven't met her yet, but she should be starting this month, so I will have a chance to meet her, I believe, at the next CIT board meeting. We also have the fire chief, Chief Warnock, and the superintendent. So the, the five of us, six of us sit on this team and there are action teams that have been identified to conduct the work of the community impact team. So we have two action teams that have been very active. One is the K-12 Programs and Services Action Team, the other is the Social Services Action Team. So on Monday, the 29th of April, we had our first annual Community Impact Team breakfast meeting. And at that time, Chief Murphy, um, conducted a PowerPoint presentation on all of the work that's gone on in the last year. One of the outcomes of the Social Services Action Team was the development of the crisis and resource guide that was included in your packet. This was a wonderful undertaking that gathered all of these important programs and services that are available to individuals, um, that, as a resource and if you have a, a member of your family or if you have a friend that's in crisis, there's also very important, uh, contact information included in this book in order to have one-stop shopping. There's an electronic version of this document on the CIT website and we'll be providing links to the town website, um, both to the fire and police department website, as well as to the school department website. So I, I'd like to, um, give a shout out to this particular action team that did an awful lot of work. The K-12 Programs and Services Action Team, um, I, each member of the board is a liaison to an action team. I am logically the liaison to the K-12 Programs and Services Action Team. So our focus has been, um, on three areas of interest. One, um, to implement the health survey that was done this year in grades six through 12, supported by the Massachusetts Department of Elementary and Secondary Education and the Department of Public Health. The second was to launch a parent and community speaker series and the third is to do a needs assessment to continue the parent, um, and community speaker series. So I'm very pleased, um, to announce that on June 6th at 7:00 PM, included in your packet is a poster of the first speaker, a national speaker that will be coming to North Reading, um, and her name is Sean Edgington. She's a, what they call a tech expert and cyberbullying prevention expert, um, and the title of her discussion will be social, social media savvy, summer and beyond. And so we're hoping that, um, lots of members of the community and parents will join us. She'll be talking. Her daughter, um, had been cyberbullied when she was in middle school. That's how Sean came to, um, start doing a lot of research on this particular topic. We were hoping that her daughter Nicole would be able to join her, uh, for the presentation. Unfortunately, or fortunately, she's graduating from college at that same time, so she's unable to join us. But, um, this, this particular initiative is funded through a grant that was obtained by the Community Impact Team from the state. Both Senator Tar and Representative Jones worked very hard to access that funding for the Community Impact Team. They both attended the breakfast meeting that we had on April 29th. So I encourage you, if you can make it, to attend this June 6th presentation. We will be having registrations for this. The K-12 action team is meeting tomorrow at 2:30 to, um, launch the publicity campaign, so you'll see more about this in the very near future. But this is the mock-up of the poster that will be blown up and posted all around town. It'll be on the websites, it'll be in the schools, it'll be in the town offices and town buildings and as well as some of the businesses around town. We're hoping that they'll allow us to post it as well. But there will be a registration process because for the first 50 registrants, um, of citizens from North Reading, um, there will be a free, there will be a free book given away called Texting, Facebook and Social Media, The Parents' Guide, written by Sean Edgington. So, um, we're really encouraging people to attend. She, we've had a chance to see her clips from Fox News, CNN and CBS Radio, uh, prior to inviting her to come as a speaker and she is very engaging. So, I just wanted to announce that this evening and the work at the CIT has been, um, very important, it's ongoing and I, I think it is, um, it's a nice service to be able to offer to the community.
Questions or comments?
This is great.
Yeah. The booklet's great, I took a look at, it's got some great, it's a great, it's a great resource, it's really good.
Great. And that is the logo, um, and it's on the website.
Next, um, we have sub, uh, routine matters and the only thing under there is a brief budget update.
Yes.
Correct, Carl?
Well, uh, as the committee knows, we were able to present our school budget to the finance committee in late April. I think we had a very constructive evening there, they were very supportive and they're continuing their support through, uh, informing us that they have voted unanimously, unanimously to support the budget that will be put forth and voted on at town meeting.
Great.
And just an aside, the board of selectmen are voting, um, on the town budget this evening at their meeting.
Okay. Subcommittee updates, we have no updates from past meetings, however, we do have a busy schedule. Finance planning teams meeting May 10th, evaluation subcommittee, Janine, May 10th at 10:30, uh, policy subcommittee, Janine, May 14th at 4 o'clock, athletic subcommittee May 28th, and then the Norcam board meeting is May 23rd. Anything on administrative reports or correspondence, Kathy?
I just have a couple of, um, pieces of good news that I'd like to share with the committee and with the public. On April 27th, the middle school drama club performed at the Blanchard Middle School in Westford. This was a competition, the middle school performing arts teacher, Susan Fisher, brought forward Chicago E R R. And I'm very pleased to say that the cast of 15 and the crew of six won a gold medal. It is the highest award that you can achieve. And four students received individual medals as well, there were individual awards. This is the second year that they've competed and last year they won a silver, so they've upgraded and they've won the highest award this year.
Hooray!
Congratulations.
Yes.
It really is great. Then another announcement, the batch elder school grade three team for, that won the regionals for explorer, the Explorer Vision Competition, sponsored annually by Toshiba and the National Science Teachers Association, has won the national competition for the second year in a row.
If you read the number of participants.
I know, isn't it unbelievable?
5,000 participants.
5,000 participants in it and obviously Cliff is very privy to this, but it was incredible to see, I mean, yeah.
They were judged the best entry in the K through three category from across the country.
I, was it the Globe North that wrote this out on Sunday?
Yeah, it's a big story on Sunday, yeah.
Oh, I haven't seen it.
Oh, yeah, big article in the Globe North, very good article, with nice, very nice pictures too.
Right. And it's funny, it quotes the, one of the kids, I think it's the daughter of a firefighter who, and, and one of the, it's to help firefighters and, and police officers.
It's called a site system.
Yes.
And it aids firefighters to the use of a holographic image.
Yes.
A holographic image, third graders.
But I think she said she was worried because now she's going to have to make it a reality for her father because he's a firefighter and he really wants to use that.
It's quite an honor, it really is. The batch elder school does great, some, great job with this stuff.
Inside on that, that particular team, I happen to be quite familiar with.
Just say it, Cliff.
Yeah.
Your daughter's one of the, um.
She was the mentor. And, uh, my granddaughter.
Grandma's on the team.
Members, yes.
Uh, but the, uh, the interesting thing is that they had an entirely different program, an entirely different concept, two weeks before the submittal. And they, they were watching TV and they saw it on TV. Somebody had already invented it.
Did they?
And so they went to work, put their heads together and came up with a new project, a new program, new idea. And, uh, and then they, they developed around that one in the last two weeks.
Wow.
And, uh, they were, they were obviously very excited, they get to go to Washington, the whole family.
They got, they, they get a, a scholarship, right?
And a $10,000 per kid.
Per kid scholarship.
Plus, uh, they got the, the camera for being, regenerating, uh, the, the video camera. So it's a, it's a really, really big thing and winning it two years in a row out of the batch, um, that's, uh, that's pretty, uh, pretty exciting.
There's a lot of great accomplishments going on and I think it all starts with the school committee.
I think it does.
It blows down from the ground.
Well, it's not really more than random chance, but I'm not sure you had a rule.
Yeah, I'm hoping we'll have them, have the students in here with, um, their mentors to explain, like we had the middle school kids in. we had the middle school kids in last meeting to
They should do the video for you. It's the video that they have on their web, on the website.
Oh, they have video?
They have to develop a website, and the video is, is, is very, very much fun. They, they have, they, they use the fire department, because it's principally a, a deal to work with the fire department. And the kids are first seen shining up the engine, and then they get a call, and they put their system into operation, and then they, they have them in the fire truck going down the road.
It's probably a lot of overtime.
Yes.
And then they, they see the building, and then they're in the building and using the system to help. And it, and it's quite an interesting concept. I think the magic word in the whole thing was hologram, but that's my own.
It's just, there were so many entrants, I, I mean, it's just incredible, it really is.
The, the concept was that you would have a hologram of the, of all the buildings. You'd be able to develop a hologram.
Oh, so they'd be able to see before they went into the building?
In, you know, in reserve.
Right.
And then when there's a fire, you can develop a plan.
Yeah.
And that, that would integrate with the thermal imaging, and the two things would, would merge to tell the firefighters where to go and how to make an entrance to the building, and that would be developed with the people back at the station and transmitted to
The guys on the scene.
firefighters on the ground through their hologram on the wristwatch.
Great. That is great news.
So the participants, I'd just like to name them, third graders Harley Duffley, Annika Howe, John Jennings, and Abby Wall. Their teacher, Liz Dill, was involved, and the mentor was Laura Wall. And so, as somebody, I think, just mentioned, they have an all-expenses-paid trip to Washington, D.C. for the first weekend in June, where they will attend an awards ceremony.
That's fantastic.
Yes, that's awesome. That is great news.
Also worth mentioning again, North Reading High School ranked twenty-nine in Massachusetts by U.S. News and World Report. They received a silver medal, or silver standing. You could receive gold, silver, or bronze. And I was informed today that there might be another award on the way, but I can't share that with you until it is confirmed, so stay tuned, but
I will take all he wants.
Yes, I think it's Jerry's winning school committee member of the year, I think. I'm not a hundred percent sure. I think that's what's Yes, you have, you still have to enter the national.
I didn't want to say anything.
Okay. Coming up, we have our next meeting is Monday, May twentieth, and then June third, we'll meet at six-thirty prior to town meeting, and then we'll participate in town meeting, and then June tenth and June twenty-fourth. I am, yes?
I will not be able to make next week's meeting.
That's okay, you, you didn't know the schedule.
Right.
You what?
She what?
But you will be at town meeting.
You will be at town meeting.
I will be at a meeting, yes. I will be at a state.
Okay.
Seventeenth through the twenty-sixth.
I do think
I have no comment at all.
You've got your back.
One second. Oh, I, I, as I mentioned before, I'm going to, and I will involve Ms. Willis, I'm going to talk to the selectmen about meeting schedules, because it would be much more convenient, I think, for us to meet, not convenient for Kathy, I'll come here and help you carry this stuff over to town hall, I promise, all right?
With a wheelbarrow?
Yes. I will come and help you, but, but it would be easier for, I think, the cable and everybody if we could meet in the town hall with the selectmen meet, because that's set up for meetings, it's got the robotic cameras, it's set for the sound. So I'm going to talk to whomever was named chairman tonight, and
Where are they going to go?
No, they, no, we're going to sync the meeting schedules. Not, not S I N K, S Y N C.
Okay.
The meeting schedules, so, so that's it. Anybody have anything else tonight? Janine, you made it. Congratulations. Made it to your first meeting.